Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public listening. I will now call this June twenty second, twenty twenty one committee of the whole meeting to order. Since the current local state and federal emergency declarations and guidance regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic, this meeting of the Minneapolis Board of Education is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statute thirteen B point zero two one, with members participating remotely via interactive technology. This is a discussion meeting and no votes will be taken. The meeting is being livestreamed on our website and on channel fifteen and a recording will be available in both places. Directors and presenters, please remember to mute yourselves when not talking to avoid that sound noise. And for the benefit of all of us, and in particular for our interpreters and for those using closed captions, please remember to speak clearly, slowly, and into your microphone. Director Polly, will you please call the world through the record?
Dr. Allison. Dr. Alamin.
Here.
Dr. Ali. Dr. Surya.
Here.
Dr. Jordan.
Here.
Director Caprini.
Present.
Director Polly's here, Chair Allison.
Here.
Student Rep. Gervaisko.
Thank you. Our topic this evening is an enrollment update. Directors, we will take questions after the staff presentation. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead.
We're working on it. We'll see what happens.
Thank you, Ryan. It gave me the reminder to unmute. So thank you, Superintendent Chair Allison, members of the board. It was my pleasure to have the opportunity to present enrollment numbers to you tonight. And, you know, I was lamenting before I, you know, as we were putting together this presentation, that, you know, there's a lot of numbers tonight and a lot of, you know, some charts, but certainly not the color and, and, and I think in some regards, the excitement that previous presentations have had. But I, but I also want to articulate that the numbers you'll see tonight are part of a larger narrative, as the superintendent mentioned, relative of the conference district design and our promise of delivering a well-rounded education regardless of zip code. Under the goal, three goals of equity, academics, and sustainability. Again, as a, as a reminder for folks, the premise is to, is to centralize magnets, have stronger community schools. These stronger community schools will allow us to increase market share and as a direct response to, to parent needs. And so as we adjusted boundaries and as a result, and you'll see the numbers tonight, it allowed us to really invest resources into literacy, into ensuring that every student across the district next year has access to fifth grade music, that we don't have such large class variations in enrollment between our high schools depending on where the students live, that we're able to provide mental health support. We'll have mental health support now across the district in every school regardless of zip code. Student for all. You know, I was surprised as we went to C D D, that over half of our students did not have access to after-school programming. And so, again, restraining our community schools will be able to have after-school programming, equity training for all, and of course, a focus on climate. So the numbers do and will tell a larger story in terms of a brighter promise for our students beginning fall twenty one. Go to the next slide. So tonight we'll talk about enrollment projections. We'll share some of the impact of, of the first year in terms of the reduction in small schools or schools below two fifty or below. We have race-identifiable sites. Those are sites as of October nineteen. Our integration plan at the time were eighty-six percent or above students of color. And so we're seeing a dramatic reduction in R S sites. Schools that are eighty percent or more free lunch, we're seeing a slight reduction there. And then we'll talk about, take a look at some magnet school data in particular. And then we'll have Associate Superintendent Cox walk us through the appeals process and some of the data associated with that. Because again, this is, anytime you're, you're going through a boundary change and making adjustments relative to enrollment, you know, there, there are some challenging cases and situations that, that we want to respond to. And, and so Associate Superintendent Cox has helped lead us on this process and she'll have an opportunity to share that process with you and some data that we've seen as a result of that. Next slide. So.
You know, we take a look at our kindergarten enrollment numbers. Immigration is something that, that makes a difference. So, so those are certainly considerations. But, but as you focus on the enrollment projections here, what I want to point out is we began, you know, with projection of, it actually began with a projection of thirteen twenty nine. So next year, we're going to be down thirteen twenty nine. Now, this is a result of. You know, the, uh, they call C D D. You will see over the course of time. And you know, the solution is now. Do believe that as we have more consistency across the district. And that stronger academics, that, that we will bring students back to Minneapolis. There are. If you want to point out to you. But the, the point of this is to show that, you know, Minneapolis. So the Minneapolis. Yeah, all point two percent. We had a call pandemic. There is a sign of optimism. Uh, the first is just our kindergarten placements. You see that our kindergarten numbers. Yeah, cause she pay a big bang. Uh, Lee Peter. It, it doubled in terms of the number of kindergarten students. Hello, who did no show place for the following year. To talk about is kind of a low. We saw came back at the kindergarten level. So we actually brought back about a hundred and twenty nine students back after we returned back to school. The dire is, is originally projected. So a very positive sign there that we are seeing. Next, I want to point your attention to. I believe like eight of the eleven schools that we identified as magnets for next year. Were formerly racially identifiable. And that was a deliberate attempt to, as we're centralizing the magnets, to really, you know, increase accessibility to those magnets across different economic and racial lines. What we're looking for here are two things. We're looking at the current, the school current free lunch launch. And then we want to take a look at the lottery number. So you see lottery one. We had a second lottery to support economic integration. So we committed to looking at our first lottery, seeing how that went. Yeah, but yeah, she had a color. We want our lottery, those applying. In these cases to be below. The free lunch launch percentage at, at the schools. You know, check it out. Uh, look at the thooms. Yeah, the best thing you can do. Uh, current free lunch population right now is ninety percent. Uh, just a signal that. She had a pay percent. As the time the second lottery came around. Right, thirty-one percent of applicants qualify for free lunch. Overall sixty percent applied were, did not qualify free lunch. So this is just a snapshot that's showing that we are economically integrating our schools because those that are applying through the lottery process are interested in the economic integration. And so there's some very positive pieces here. I'll use another example. Um, let's take a look at Green. Uh, Green current population eighty-five percent free lunch. Uh, the, the first lottery. Lottery two fifty-two percent. Uh, long the academic integration. And so you'll see this obviously. Now, yeah, he can story. For some really positive signs here. Uh, Sullivan, really good story. Yeah, Solomon. So the, yeah, he can check it. He look check it out. Uh, the, the neighborhoods were actually more integrated in some cases and, um, than the schools. So what you're seeing at Sullivan, for example, is you're seeing a number of families who are choosing Sullivan. So currently the rate. First lottery fifty-one percent qualify for free lunch. The second lottery, the second push. Twenty-two percent free lunch qualified. So you see that, again, those applying are supporting the economic integration of our magnet. Uh, and this is just taking a look at our student color populations, those locations too. Using another example here. Um, let's take a look at, um, you know, we'll take a look at Bethune again. And, and you're seeing now, if we recall, one of the commitments we made was to support the transitions where we were allowing students who currently attend Bethune, who are racially identifiable in the school, to stay at Bethune if they so chose. And so I think it's a positive that so many students at Bethune chose to stay at Bethune. That, that showed that they were valued in education near receiving at that location. Um, as I showed the previous slide, the economic integration, you're seeing the free lunch percentage go down, both free lunch and our students of color. Not as dramatic, but again, as I show the next slide to you, you know, what you're going to see is we want to take a look at our kindergarten numbers. Take a look at the kindergarten numbers. Because the kindergarten numbers are really what I'd call your true magnet. So this is the first grade level at, at your K fives and K eights in which you truly are not having students currently attending. So these are new students. So we gave an example, taking a look at, at Green, that was the example I used. Uh, Green is currently their kindergarten's eighty-seven percent free lunch and ninety percent students of color. Their kindergarten enrollment, fifty-two percent free lunch. So this is an example of how a magnet program. You're actually both reducing a, a school that has a high concentration free lunch. And also a high concentration racial identifiable school, which is ninety percent students of color. Um, you know, you're also, but you're seeing that across the board. I want to point that out. Uh, that you're seeing that across the board. These kindergarten numbers in which you're seeing economic and racial integration across the board with, with our, with our magnets. Again, showing that the taste, there is a taste for economic integration and racial integration. That's a very positive thing and certainly testament to our communities for, for wanting to, to do some specialized programming and also in some cases, um, supporting the, the goals in C D D. You also want to look deeper and take a look at. Uh, I didn't want to. We want to look at proportionality. Uh, one of the concerns with the equity diversity impact assessment regarding the placement, E D I A, was that there was a concern that you were not, you were not getting. Families who qualify for special education, that they were applying for spending on magnet programs. Special education. One of the things we want to take, we want to take a look at is proportionality. So for example. Let's use our African-American line here. At the kindergarten level, African-American families represent roughly thirty-four percent of our student population. But actually representing fifty-seven percent of the total requests. And so you see that in some cases, it's actually an over proportion. As we dig deeper though, what we're finding is that we're seeing more middle income of grand income as well as. Those times qualify for free lunch. But there's a more diverse group of African-American families that are choosing this way in our magnet. I want to move down and take, have you take a look also at special education. One of the commitments under the conference district design is that we wanted to make sure that students with special needs had the opportunity to stay in our magnet program. Our special education students represent ten percent of our kindergarten population. Based on the requests and then, uh, based on the percent of enrollment and then twenty-one percent of those requests. So, so that's a positive. Uh, you're seeing also really positive things. Uh, one thing to point out is our white student population here. Um, you know, it's actually under, so, so you see thirty percent enrollment. Nineteen percent of your requests. So we need to do a better job recruiting our white families. Uh, to support that goal of integration. I, I think that certainly there's efforts underway to do that. But I, I will say that following national trends. Particularly with integration and race identification in public schools. You do see a trend at first. And then your white families will tend to follow shortly after. Uh, but this is really good news. You want a really positive trend. It is going in the direction that we anticipate. See the same for sixth grade. Proportionality here. Special education, you see proportional percent of enrollment versus almost a percentage request. So that's a good sign. And generally your team. Still, you see the under participation of our white families. And, and you do see some over proportionality representation for African-American Hispanic families. That's not necessarily a negative thing as well. But just something to take a look at, to make sure that we're not, um, we're not offering the opportunities from an equity lens for our families, both from a racial standpoint, economically, so as special needs side and E L L as well. High school, magnet corner breaks projected demographic sixth grade. Again, this is showing, um, our previous launching student color populations. Um, again, those sixth grade classes, so kindergarten at the middle level, six, seven, eight, that new level would be at a Franklin in particular, or Anderson. Those, those would be new grade levels, right? So this is the first grade levels that don't include transition numbers. So you do see Anderson's more integrated economically as well as students of color. Franklin as well. Um, and then Jefferson, um, is not there. Jefferson is very interesting. Um, you know, we're not meeting that goal yet. Uh, we do see a slight decrease in students of color, but we are seeing more free lunch lunch students applying. Um, and, and so again, additional work to do in that area. Uh, Jefferson is another location where the families really love that school. Jefferson, yeah, he called. Which is a really positive thing. It's a positive thing is the number of families chose to stay, which is, um, which is actually excellent. And there's opportunities for those families to have a quality education. And certainly room for other families to join the Jefferson family. Uh, you see a nice reduction in Solomon as well. Moving from magnet schools though, I, I do want to point out that we are seeing a reduction in numbers. You know, one of the goals was to equalize enrollment across the schools. A high school twenty twenty-one that as, as at end of year had less than two fifty. And so moving into next year, uh, you have three. So that's a positive, uh, certain positive. One of those schools, um, Paul is right on the borderline. I, I really anticipate we probably could end up with two from actually begin the year. Uh, this is a bit more dramatic. In October two thousand nineteen, we began the world of C D D. We had twenty-four schools that identified R M D E that are eighty-six percent students of color. As we made identification through the process, three of those schools. Natural attrition had less than eighty-six percent. But even at that. Current projections for next year. So twelve schools are projected at at least six percent students of color. Um, and that's certainly a big deal. In the sense that across the state, across the nation, district struggle. Whatever district. Of how to move more towards having racially integrated schools. In this sense, the M D definition, which is racially identifiable, when we use for the conference district sign. We are seeing a reduction in the number of schools that were. Uh, go. Uh, you might be on the hill. We're not quite there in terms of reducing the number of schools that are eighty percent or more free lunch. We're only declining by one. Um, and, and I think as you're called eighty, we're using eighty-six percent R S eighty percent for free lunch. And so I think a lot of schools, while they are decreasing their concentration, probably. They're not getting below that eighty percent. They're probably going from eighty-six percent to ninety percent to a little above eighty, eighty-four. But we are seeing a decrease in the percentage of schools. So then get them. I want to move to ninth grade placement trends. One of the, uh, as I mentioned previously. One of the goals of, of conference district design is to take a look at high schools. And really try to address the variation. Uh, we saw in our high schools. So that regards of zip code. Students would have a quality education at high school level. And. It was very recently that we had high schools. Conference high schools that had, that were at three hundred students. And in other areas you see at close to two thousand. And without question, that does impact the perception of quality. There's good teachers across the district. A number of students will impact the number of choices during the offer. So one of the goals we're attempting to do is try to move towards a model where we have our schools that would, um, conference schools will have at least twelve hundred students. And no more than sixteen to seventeen hundred students. So we started with ninth grade. And what we're looking at here, we're looking at ninth grade enrollment. And then we're looking at enrollment for twenty twenty, this year. For next year's. Um, and so you see a slight increase, the column to the far right. So you see increases in enrollment for Edison. Fair, Henry, Heritage, North, Roosevelt. Slight decrease at South. Uh, new, 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 the south. Uh, John, the highest, the southwest. John, when you, you know, the washburn. They, you know, the, the wellstone. Wellstone. But, but you are seeing that shift. And so that we're able to provide a more quality experience across the city. Wanted the, the impacts of that type of work. And, and this is, uh, you know, this, this is, uh, the direction that we were expecting to see. Um, as whole, true, whole and true with our conference district line. I do want to highlight. Fair is a very interesting high school. We said, well, my high school.
Um, I'll start with Director Caprini.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, and thank you Senior Officer Moore and Senior Officer Cox for the presentation. Two questions. First, what are the efforts that schools are doing to recruit families? And that's part of it, and then specifically white families. So that's two parts. And then the second one is, were any of the schools that students were placed in, were any of the staff from the school, the receiving school, part of the conversation in, you know, what their school has to offer, you know, just this whole transition piece? Because I guess I feel like it's important, it would be important to have, I'll just use Henry as an example. If there was a parent who didn't want their child to go to Henry, I would hope that Principal Abdullah and his team would be able to be a part of talking with that family to support them in feeling welcome and more comfortable. And so I guess that's my question. So what's up?
Chair Ellison, if I may respond, Director Caprini, thank you for the question. I'll start with just kind of providing an overarching view of the recruitment question you had. I know we had this discussion, I think it was after the first lottery and the reaction to what we had for numbers. But subsequent to that lottery, there was an effort on a number of schools to provide greater outreach beyond just what we would traditionally have when we had in-person learning going on. You mentioned Patrick Henry High School. I know Principal Abdullah did an outstanding job of putting together a video and providing that through social media. That was something that was shared with other schools. And in that sharing, there were many more videos that were produced and put out there. In some cases, we had partnerships. We had schools that were now feeder schools to different middle schools where they partnered together. And so they provided that resource for families to take a new look or consideration of their school. In addition to that, the idea of recruitment and messaging for families continues to happen as we've gone through our interview and select process. We have new positions in many schools, new staff. And so there's a greater amount of outreach that's happening now with those new teachers coming into the building, wrapping up, you know, what they just finished this school year. So we anticipate still have some of those discussions in early, in August, you know, when they return back to kind of welcome families in and do a returning to school. We also anticipate that there will be more potential recruitment to families as we start our school year up, as word of mouth happens. You know, when students are actually in the building and they're seeing the new facility that they have now as part of their trajectory for whether it be elementary, middle, or high school. So we're looking at a number of things there in terms of the recruitment that will be happening going forward. But certainly wanted to highlight what was being done at the school level from principals, communicating through social media with videos, as well as reaching out to their neighboring schools or their transitioning schools. And I'll ask maybe Senior Officer Moore or Associate Superintendent Cox if you have other pieces to add, because I know we have, in addition to our community schools, we have magnets that have done a lot of work. And also I know our special education department has really helped promote the transition for families.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. I can just add, I know that our principals work really hard in terms of looking at this work as part of their climate effort. And so principals were given a list of students that were transitioning to their schools and they made phone calls, saw locations, thinking in fact of a really phenomenal session that the principal was marred, you know, as they went into a gray configuration, for example. And the middle schools, principals, that would be the new receiving schools, were all present and presented about their schools. It was great to watch the principals present to the families that they would be receiving about their school. So there was a lot of work between schools and between principals for transitioning schools, but also, as Superintendent said, lots of virtual open houses, lots of personal phone calls to families answering questions. For example, I know the principal at North High called parents, she diligently called parents and welcomed them to their, to North High. So I would just, I do want to call out that there was a lot of effort made by our principal. In addition to that, you know, we tried, and I'm interested to see what the final results look like. We did have some early childhood opportunities at some of our magnets, in which we were looking at having integrated childhood opportunities at Sheridan, Jefferson, Bethune, and Sullivan. And so we were trying, typically, our early childhood programs are for the only four families that qualify for free lunch. But we actually bought more seats in other locations across the district so that we could be able to have integrated opportunities at the early childhood. Again, the goal is that those families of younger ages will participate in the early childhood program at those magnets, and they would get admission to the kindergarten program. And so again, those early childhood programs are more economically and racially integrated than those kindergarten programs. So that's something that parents are bought into, and it's a win-win. If you're able to get families choosing integrated early childhood, and we know that the positive impact of early childhood education on academic achievement for the dual integration strategy and academic achievement strategy, having early childhood programs to support integration. So those were some efforts, Director Caprini. And I think they yielded some positive results. And so, but I think a lot of this work, I'll be quite honest, is word of mouth. You know, as we're transitioning, the climate work is going to be critical. Outreach, making sure that, you know, as Associate Superintendent Cox mentioned, it's the personal phone calls and just welcoming those families to the schools. And that seems to work. I do believe that those numbers will increase both, you know, our white families as well as families who don't qualify for free lunch, as seen nationally in the research. The numbers for the first year actually is very positive to me. And I always have to remind myself, this is the first year that we're doing this. And we're coming out of a pandemic. And we're coming out of a racial reckoning in the city of Minneapolis. There are a lot going on that impacted our ability to deliver. So when I look at the numbers that I'm seeing, it really supports my belief. It kind of fired up in terms of the values, morals of folks in Minneapolis and their desire to have economic and integrated learning opportunities. So we'll get there. But it's certainly much better than I had hoped for for the first year. But I wanted, I want to call out our principals for their hard work in making those personal phone calls and in having the virtual open houses. And I see them working better together. And I'm starting to see us move towards a one Minneapolis and moving away from this idea of competition, right? To this idea that if everyone's healthy, then we're all healthier, right? And so those are some things that I saw.
That's awesome. And first, I wanted to apologize to Associate Superintendent Cox for not using her correct title. I refer to you as Senior Officer, so I apologize for that. I asked the question because I wanted the community or the listening audience to hear the answer, because I'm aware of all of the work that's gone into recruiting families and I'm extremely proud of the work that they've been doing. So I just wanted the community to hear the district say, you know, what's actually happening and had a lot of those principals on their backs and the collaboration that's happening with the middle schools and the high schools. It's just really exciting. So thank you for that work. And then I'll stop there and let Associate Superintendent Cox answer the second question.
Yeah, I would just add to what Senior Officer Moore said, that we had many of our schools have new types of special education programming in their buildings. So our department really worked with them to make sure that they were welcoming all families into their, into the building, that we had spaces identified so as parents were taking virtual tours, they could really see where their student might be. I would also say that we are watching the numbers very closely weekly in regards to our students receiving special education services. And we are in constant communication with those principals, adding support where we need it as we look at enrollment numbers. So that will be happening all through the summer. I will say for the appeals process, for those 32 families, they are getting an intensive support through the transition. For the other families who did not get their placement appealed, approved, we know that we have contacted those support staff in buildings to make sure that transition goes smoothly and to make sure that they're helping through that. I do appreciate your suggestion, Director Caprini. I'm going to follow up with our placement director to make sure that our principals are also notified, because I think that makes a huge difference for families to feel welcome. So I appreciate that comment and suggestion.
Thank you. Director Arneson, are there any questions in the room?
Yes, thank you, Student Representative.
So I was just thinking that, oh, sorry. What are the things?
Yeah, it was on before, but now it's on.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay. So what are some of the things that are being done to continue, lessening the high poverty concentration in schools? And then is it appeals?
Sorry for the interruption, Student Representative, Governor Meskow. Can you just speak right into the mic? Very close.
Oh, okay. So what are some of the things that are going to continue to be done to reduce the concentration of high poverty in certain schools? And then will the appeals committee focus on the mental health of students transitioning into different schools in Minneapolis continuing?
I'll make sure I heard the question that you asked. The first one was, what are we doing to address the racial disparities in terms of the population within the buildings? Is that right? Oh, the poverty, the high concentration of poverty. How are we addressing that in our buildings? And then the second question was, will we continue to focus on the mental health supports of those? Will the appeals committee continue to focus on supporting the mental health? Okay. So the first one, what are we doing to address the high concentrations of poverty? There are a number of strategies that we've been looking at. One had to do with how we set up our, I guess, guidelines of what are targets on what we wanted to accomplish in terms of the poverty numbers. And I'll ask Senior Officer Moore to restate those so I don't misspeak and say what those numbers are. But we were trying to find target populations, target numbers. And our goal was to, through our policy and through our monitoring of how we moved our lottery that we thought we could manage some of that through the lottery itself. The second question you asked, I'll ask Associate Superintendent Cox to speak to, but I think it was, again, how are we ensuring that we're through the appeals process, still working to support the mental health of students in the cases where they didn't receive the appeals? Senior Officer Moore, could you take the first and maybe explain again that range that we were hoping to target with our concentration of poverty? And then describe a little bit about how those targeted numbers and the monitoring of the lottery process could support our goals.
Thank you, Superintendent Chair Ellison, Board Member Governor Meskow. Thank you for your question. So our lottery, you know, as we looked at our student placement policy and regulations, we wanted to ensure that our magnets for our placement process would reflect the district average for free lunch. And the number we landed on was 60%, and then we said that, those 60%, we didn't want our magnets, as we're looking at those kindergarten numbers, our goal is that we want to make sure that our magnets were 60% free lunch and 40%, or 60% free lunch and 40% non-free lunch. And so through guidelines, we place, essentially, you have two separate lotteries, and you have slots reserved for both free lunch and non-free lunch. And then that is support, having those integrated opportunities. As mentioned before, though, the challenge, one, this is why we showed the kindergarten numbers and the sixth grade numbers. You know, we provide, one of our values was to support families staying in those locations that we're turning into magnets and/or if they're formerly of a magnet, we allow them to transition to a new magnet with the same theme. I want to just point out one of the challenges of this work is that we have an extremely segregated city by poverty as well as race. And ultimately, I think the biggest thing we can address in terms of reducing those numbers, certainly we can address market share. So there are families that aren't attending in those attendance area that we're going to pull back with stronger programming in our community schools. We're going to pull those families back and they're going to help diversify our school locations. But we're going to need to partner with the city on having affordable housing throughout the city of Minneapolis. Ultimately, that's how you're going to get those numbers to dramatically shift. There's areas of the city that does not have affordable housing, and so that does impact our ability to economically integrate. We are seeing some positive signs again in our magnets, and I do believe we'll see some positive signs as we increase the market share in our local attendance areas. We believe a stronger academic program, you know, that we're going to increase enrollment and then also economically integrate our schools as much as possible. And again, the big constraint is, when you look at economic integration, outside of our magnets, if you look at our community schools, is affordable housing and the lack of economic diversity that you see throughout the city. And that's something we need to partner with, with the city government, the mayor, as well as the city council. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thanks, Senior Officer Moore. If I could have Associate Superintendent Cox just speak to, again, the supports that we have around mental health and how the appeal committee is assisting with not only making sure that transition happens for students this year, but the considerations for the future.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. So the students who appeals were approved and their families, those are students who are receiving very intensive mental health supports, both from our internal staff as well as our partners, as well as also other agencies in our community. So they'll be followed as they either stay in their placement or whatever decision we made at that point. The 32 families who we have offered support through the transition will be, each one will be assigned a mental health support specialist if they choose. And it's, of course, their choice, a mental health support specialist. And the reason we did that was we really wanted someone who could have that kind of a level-up view, who could see what was happening at the school they currently are attending, and be able to make that transition of the support with that to the new school. We know that staff may be changing. We just wanted to make sure there was someone who was walking that family through that transition. Our mental health support specialists are also very connected with the building mental health teams. So they will be able to help make sure that there's a warm handoff between the two. For the other families, we'll be watching and just making sure that if they need anything as we move through, we know our internal staff, our school social workers, our school psychologists, our school counselors are really going to be watching those families to make sure that they're welcomed and that the supports are moving forward. As I said, our agencies are very aware of what's happening in the CDD. They know, are working with their families on school transitions and making sure that they're working together and they have all the information they need to either offer the same support so the student doesn't have to change providers or doing a warm handoff to that new provider at the new school. I will say the reason why it was so important to me that the district mental health team was part of the appeals process and sitting on that is, this is not only an individual student, but I also want to make sure we were looking at the system's work, right? And so I think you're getting to that when you say, how are we moving forward? And we started to hear what services families really valued in their appeals and wanting to make sure that we have that consistently across the district so that no matter what school you go to, whether it's a pathway, a choice, a magnet, all those services are very standard across. And so that was really important to me, that we were looking at those systems pieces too. You know, just as a reminder to our families out there, our mental health hotline will continue to operate through the summer. We'll have those services available. Also, you know, if you feel like your student needs something and they're in summer programming, we have a school-based mental health partner at every school, as well as a school social worker who are there to meet those students' needs. If your student isn't in summer school, call the hotline and we'll get you connected to more supports as we're going on. And then really looking, this week, our teachers have the opportunity to attend a mental health institute. We're having two strands, one for classroom teachers and our ESP staff, and one that's more of a deeper expertise for our school social workers, school counselors, licensed school nurses, and school psychologists. So really looking forward, I know we're halfway through that, really excited about the learning that's happening there. We're also going to be offering that in the fall for those teachers who couldn't and other staff who couldn't participate this week with summer school starting everything. It was a really busy week. So we'll be moving forward with that. And also looking forward as part of the parent participatory evaluation process, our parents said they were really interested in having a parent institute, so we're working on that this summer also.
Thank you. I think it's really important, especially for a lot of those students who didn't get their appeals to be heard, that they can enjoy some of the support from the district in those classes.
Thank you, Student Rep. Governor Meskow. Director Jordan, I saw your hand up, I saw your hand go down. Make sure you have an opportunity to speak. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I believe, I believe Rochelle Cox answered my question I was thinking of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Arneson?
Thank you. I just want to check, Director Enz, Director Ali, do either of you have questions? Nope. Okay. Great. Well, I do have a couple questions slash comments if we have a moment, if that's okay. I'm just going to take my mask off so you can hear me. Okay, so one, I just want to thank you all for presenting. I'm kind of looking both ways, the superintendents to my right and the screen is in front of me where I can see Associate Superintendent Cox and Senior Officer Moore. So forgive me as I kind of go back and forth here, it's a little awkward. All right, but I do want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for providing this information. I think this is a really good opportunity to monitor so many of the goals that we talked about during this CDD process. And many, it's a very clear highlight. So I really appreciate this discussion tonight. I have just a couple of rather brief clarifying questions, if you wouldn't mind. The first, I'll just say them both. The first is with the high school enrollment. I'm really glad to see more balanced numbers. I know that was a really important goal with this project. That said, I noticed that the South numbers appear outside of our goal, I guess, of our ideal number. And so I am just wondering if that, if we think that's related to boundaries? If it's just a large number of students who live in those boundaries? Or if that might be related to something different, maybe a citywide program? Or if we're expecting those numbers to, it's just kind of the transition and we expect those numbers to evolve? It looks like we have still pretty much close to 500 students per class, which would, you know, put the school at around 2,000 students, which I think is higher than we were hoping for. So that's my first question. And then my second question is about the special education. Special education, first, I just have a comment and just say I'm really pleased to see that such a high percentage of families with children with special education needs participated or expressed interest in our magnet schools. I know that was something we specifically talked about with the CDD and that that was not happening in many of our magnet schools, and it just really wasn't accessible to special, for children who need to have some extra special education needs. So I'm excited about that. And wondering, and this is more about placement, not necessarily appeals, but just wanting to confirm, if I recall, we were working individually with or in a small scale, I guess, with families or children who have IEPs and thinking about their placement. And so it might have happened in the appeal process, but it might have happened actually before, like kind of in the initial placement. So just wanting, it wasn't specifically mentioned in the appeals, but I believe and just wanting to confirm that we took into consideration IEPs and the services at schools and that process. So those are my two clarifying questions, Superintendent, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, thank you, Director Arneson, for your questions. I'll first ask Associate Superintendent Cox to respond to the special ed one, but want to make sure I'm also signaling the second one, which was around specifically, you're looking at the ninth grade placement trends, I believe. And you mentioned South, as in South High School or just the general? Okay. And so Senior Officer Moore, I think the question coming up for you is, we noticed that the numbers for the South High are right, for ninth graders, are right around, excuse me, right around 500. And just doing simple math, and you add that over the course of the high school career, that seems to be a very large population. So how are we, yeah, four classes, so how are we managing that? Or do we anticipate that those numbers will hold at that level?
Just kind of the cause, is that just kind of an anomaly? Is it related? I guess what I'm getting at is, is it related to the boundaries? Is the boundaries, like, do we accurately predict the boundaries? Are we comfortable with that number related to the boundaries, I guess?
Got it. Okay. So Associate Superintendent Cox, could you speak to the special education question, which was really around what were the considerations for students with special education and their placement? And I know the individualized education plan is a key element of that consideration. And I also just wanted to reinforce the acknowledgement of our prioritization and our focus around special education throughout the comprehensive district design. You know, with close to 20% of our students qualifying for those services, I think you can see throughout the process that we've had and even the communication and presentation tonight how special education students continue to be lifted up and acknowledged as a critical part of our redesign of the district and the supports for them. So I'll turn it over to Associate Superintendent Cox.
Thank you. Yes, we, so we are ecstatic about what's happening at the magnet programs and really reaching out to the principals, really gearing up for support, and really wanting to make sure that those citywide programs or programs that have specific disability areas for our students receiving more intensive services are really mirroring and being inclusive of the programming of the magnets. So if you are in a program for students with autism and you're at the magnet for arts, you're going to see arts in your citywide program just as well as when you're included, as well as when you're in your special education classroom. So very excited about that. We really focused on those students receiving federal setting three. And so those students who are getting more intensive services as well as spending more of their time in special education than they are general education. We wanted to first make sure that, A, number one, we were following the same, what I'll call, rules as general education. So those students who are already in a high school, we were not going to move them. We were committed to keeping them where they were so that they were able to do that. The other piece that we really looked at was making sure that those students who are federal setting three students did not have places where they were moving between three schools. So we tried to really reduce their transitions, especially at grade four, five, and seven, eight. And so those kind of big transition years, we looked at making sure that we keep kids where they were so they wouldn't have three transitions in a row as we were moving forward. You know, I know that our teams are doing a tremendous job of moving materials, moving interventions. We're having everything turned really back into our professional instructional center so we can kind of relook at it, make sure everything is complete. And then we're looking at the profiles of each of our classrooms in each of our schools so that when they arrive, we actually are going to have the interventions that we feel would work best for those students already at the school so that we don't have a lag or a wait for those interventions. Of course, as teachers get to know their students and as IEPs teams make decisions, they can move in and out of interventions. But we really, we're committed, and I just can't say enough about our department staff as well as our teachers and our special education assistants who have been working. and our special education assistants who have been working so hard over the, the last couple of weeks to really make sure that we are ready to go for students and are able to pick up those interventions and that specialized services, starting day one when students are in their new site.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to answer your question, Director Arneson, Assistant Superintendent. Yeah, I really appreciate the, the question. I, I'm actually very confident in, in those numbers declining. I, I think the dependency will be the dual language program at Anderson. And so I'm expecting anywhere from 50 to 100 students that would normally go to South. So they're normally pathway to South, will actually end up in Roosevelt as we build up that dual language program. So there's a pathway from the dual language program at the middle school at Anderson that will feed into Roosevelt. So that will gradually decrease those numbers itself. So, um, but those numbers will gradually decline each year as the, the Anderson program becomes more successful. So, so I am confident that we'll get that down to, you know, to 17, 1800, maybe even larger eventually or less, you know, as we build up the Anderson program.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. So, thank you so much. So those were my quick clarifying questions. I have more of a comment, if it's okay. Chair, if you still have a couple minutes for that? Yeah, great. Okay, good. What I just wanted to highlight, and Superintendent, feel free to expand upon this, but I wanted to highlight just and appreciate again that we have, one of the metrics that we were really looking at is our small, our very small schools with less than 250 students and that we're decreasing the numbers there. But also some of our magnet schools, their, their classes are a little bit smaller and wanting to really give a genuine opportunity for all of our schools to build the enrollment that they need. And so just wanting to, to highlight the opportunity, the kind of fortunate opportunity that we have from these federal dollars to give us a bit of a buffer. So just, just wanting to highlight that. It is a role of our, we are going to need to have. It's difficult to support schools that have less than 250 students, not only financially, but the opportunities, as we discussed extensively during the CDD. The opportunities are really just fewer for those students. So we want to build that up, but it's also nice that we have some financial cushion, cushion, I would say, to, to give us some time to do that and for communities to truly buy into the school that's near their home. Also, a very specific thing of the federal dollars allowing us to expand our early childhood programming in some of these buildings and what a nice opportunity that will be for, for particularly these magnet schools. Someone needs to highlight that. That's one comment. Feel free to expand upon that, Superintendent, but I just felt like we should highlight that for sure. Looks like you want to expand.
Yeah, if now's an okay time. Yeah, so I, um, the reference to the, the federal dollars, specifically, you know, the, the funding received in elementary, secondary, emergency relief dollars, one and two, we do have opportunity to address some of the early childhood work that we've been doing for so long now in Minneapolis Public Schools and targeted that. But when you look at the SRR three dollars, which we do not have our application completed yet, that submission is due on October 1st. We have heard definitely the, the opportunity from the federal government to be able to stabilize what they refer to as your stabilization of staffing through this pandemic. And so because of what you just described and the commitment that we've made to our school communities around shoring up resources so that they can be supportive of a well-rounded education, as well as accelerating some of those investments that we know are beneficial for students, we'll be able to capture those dollars moving forward. So those will be considerations that we'll be making based on the feedback that we receive from, again, our community advisory group, but just the general commitment that the board has made through the board budget priorities and values. So we anticipate that, you know, the timing of those funds is, is great for us because that is what we have said all along that we're going to commit to and it aligns very well with the stabilization of, of staffing. You know, not having to make those reductions or make those decisions about what programs we're not going to offer because we don't have enough student enrollment in those schools. We can avoid that because of the support that we're receiving from those SRR three dollars.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, that's, that's helpful. And I think it's really important to just, to just highlight that. And so my final comment, before I turn it over to Director Inns, who has a, a question, it sounds like, I just wanted to compliment and, and be note out loud that our racially isolated schools have decreased by 50%. And what, how that was, again, a really major conversation. And it's been a major conversation since I've been on the board. This is the largest decrease I've seen, for sure, since I've been on the board, which is over 10 years. So, and the, the fact that there are less extreme numbers even in our racially isolated schools certainly suggests that we're on the right track. And there's, we talk about marketing and there was, and I just want to make a comment about that. There's always, there's always a push and pull, it feels like, between market share and marketing and, and our offering quality education in our schools and who should be marketing and district support and principals. But what I, what I want to say, when we talk about market share and we talk about 60%, 40% of families choosing some other, some other school. And we talk about, Mr. Moore talked a little bit about who is buying into magnets and who wasn't. And I, I just, I feel like it's important to state, at least out loud, at least in my community, but I think in, throughout Minneapolis, the connection between race and class and school choice and the importance of being able to be really clear in Minneapolis Public Schools about our values and the value of integration and our belief that that's important. Because I know that in my, in, throughout Minneapolis, this is a conversation we're struggling with, with race, a conversation about race, but it absolutely applies to schools. And I was just having a conversation, as someone who is discouraged today, her child is at one of our summer school programs, they're a Minneapolis Public School parent. And she noted that there were a variety of families taking, using our summer school program. We offer our summer school program to all families, people who go to Minneapolis Public Schools throughout the year and people who don't. And talking to some families who are very clear that they were there for the summer, but not ongoing, and their reasons were absolutely about race and class. So sometimes it's not about our schools, it's not about what our schools have to offer, but it's about the students who are in the schools. So I, I think we just always have to remember that and not apologize for our students, but rather embrace it and be clear about our values and just be aware that that's a factor. We should be, we are, of course, we're aware. We should be not afraid to state that that is, is at least in parts of, part of our enrollment and parts of our, you know, quote unquote, market share. So something to think about. So, okay. Director Inns, I think you have a question.
Uh, thank you, Director Arneson. I, I did have a few comments I wanted to make and then sort of a general question. Can, you can hear me okay, right? Yeah. So, uh, first I want to say I'm really grateful that, for one thing in particular, that our sped students, our special education students are given so many choices and have so many opportunities within our district. And I think that's a really unique thing and certainly a, a really positive, great outcome of the CDD. And I'm glad to see that families are taking advantage of that. And hopefully, as people are more aware of that opportunity, they'll take even more advantage of it. And it, it might be, you know, I know we are already, in some cases, a draw for many special education families, but it's good that we can be even more so and provide that service to families in need. So I'm really grateful for that. I, I really appreciate the comment or question of Student Representative Gabor Meskow about ongoing mental health support. And I think that's something that we ought to continue to think about, other areas where we can provide mental health support for students. In this case, you know, we have a sort of a almost esoteric situation where we need to provide supports for students, but it seems like it's a natural area where we can provide more support for students in transitions. And maybe we ought to look at a more formalized, ongoing process for dealing with students in transition and providing mental health support for students in transition within the district and from outside the district and around the district. That might be part of our regular structure going forward. And I'm also really grateful that so many of the things that we projected or hoped that would happen seem to be happening. You know, you're, there's a degree of faith that you have that things will work. And certainly we're, you know, the school here hasn't started yet and, you know, things can change. And, you know, we, we always, there, there are in many cases differences, but, you know, a lot of our indicators are good. To that point, what are some of the things that maybe we're, in a general sense, not sure about and might need to adjust as we go forward? Think, you know, the, the red flags, for lack of a better word, or areas where we maybe don't have enough information yet to know what's happening or what's going to happen? I know that probably there are some of these things already that are showing up. And I know, you know, we're always looking at information and data. So I guess to that point, I'm kind of like wondering, what are some of the holes maybe in the data or information, things that we don't know? And what are we going to do about that? And then I had just a really, like a tiny minute question. I'm wondering about the free and reduced lunch data again. And I know that last year and there was a lot of problems in gathering free and reduced lunch data. And I'm wondering how that process is going. And this is going to sound like a dumb question, but like, what is the data on the data? So for instance, you know, how much information do we get back from people? You know, do we keep track of that? Do we have like a, of the people that we requested that filled out the form? I know we ask everybody to fill out the income forms and for a lot of people, they don't want to do it. You know, it's like, so has that, has that gone down? Has that gone down in particular places? Like when I look at the Wellstone free and reduced lunch data, you know, that to me is like a, oh, maybe people aren't filling out those forms and that's why we're not getting that. And, you know, we talked about that at a couple of the meetings, but I'd like to see some more information about that and at that school in particular as well. And I want to know what we're doing about that. So, and then I just want to sum up, like, I want to sort of echo some of the comments of Director Arneson. And I, I want to sort of pull back and take a look at the big picture here and note that, you know, we, we started this process obviously a long time ago. There's been a lot of different things that have driven what we've done. And we've sort of, everything's been sort of sifted down and distilled at some point or another. And we got to a point where we said, you know, our schools are more segregated than our city is. Granted, our city, oh, is that my hair a buzzer? My time's up now. But, uh, our schools are more segregated than our city. And so we're going to do what we can about that. Our choice process is contributing to greater segregation in our schools than we have in our city. And I, you know, I think that I am proud of the fact that we have done what we can, but we have to continue to remember that those are our values, as Director Arneson said. And that is, that is what we're trying to achieve through this process. So we have to keep that lens on things. We are not going to be able to, as Minneapolis Public Schools and as the Minneapolis School Board, we're not going to be able to solve school segregation. We're not going to be able to do it, you know? And we can do what we can, but there are so many other entities and policies and forces at play that we have no control over. You know, we have state policies that we have to accept, we have federal policies, and then we have free will of, among people, you know? And all those things come into play and impact where we are. So when I think about this past month and the school integration lawsuit and just the idea that school districts are being sued, not really school districts, but states, right? And then they try to kind of pass the buck down to the school districts, I think. Like, it's impossible task that we're being handed and it's, it's not really right. And also, to expect us to make changes that are going to solve this problem is really denying the nature of the problem and it's not going to help. So I'm proud that we're doing what we can. We're not going to be able to fix everything. And certainly, we're not going to be able to solve the issue of school segregation as a school board. But, you know, I am proud of the work that we have done. So. And with that, I guess I'll turn it maybe back to either Superintendent Graff for a comment on what, you know, what we're looking at and maybe also, uh, Senior Officer Moore. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Director Inns, for your comments. I think, just to start with where you ended, we are continuing to work to create conditions for success. You know, and if I've learned anything in the last 16 months or 18 months, whatever it's been through the pandemic, it's the importance and significance of public education and what we value and how we communicate those values. To your point, we will not be able to undo what exists within our city. At the same time, we have taken approach of dismantling and redesigning our structures and our systems with our policies. And that is a, both a necessary and a bold move because we know the implications of what that means should nothing else happen in our city. Those are the steps we can take. And so I appreciate your comments with it. I appreciate the board's commitment of the values and helping us continue to move down that path, knowing that we are going to have to make adjustments. As you mentioned, the support of mental health and the, the need for maybe us to consider how do we assist in transitioning that. That is something that has universally come up again, time and time again, when we talk about what do we need to do to, to move through this pandemic and into the future? It's to have that mental health support and that idea of transition is so critical from our earliest learners coming into school, from our elementary students transitioning to middle school and into high school, as well as just a general transition. So I, I do appreciate you lifting that up and know that that has been part of a discussion already and with our advisory group around mental health. And Student Representative Gabor Meskow has been a big part of that. So I look forward to more progress in those conversations moving forward. You also mentioned around what will be different or what haven't we seen yet with, with, you know, data perhaps? And I'll share a little bit of speculative things and then maybe ask Senior Officer Moore to, to talk about that, what he sees from a data lens, as well as we might need to come back to getting more information on the free and reduced lunch. Because I, I have, again, you know, some anecdotal comments that I've heard from people around just how difficult it is to, to capture that data. And I think we are also faced with a balance of respecting where individuals are with their privacy and the cautiousness of, you know, the application and filling out forms. I think we've heard from staff and other members of the district who have children in the, the school district who have said, I've been asked to fill out the forms, you know, repeatedly and we're trying to do it in a way that does not encroach on someone's decision, but also lets them know like this is valuable information that we can utilize. So I would say we probably want to try and get more information for you specifically around Wellstone. What does that look like? And then just what do those numbers look like as we compare across the district? I know when talking with our government relations lobbyist, Josh Downham, he's, he's significantly said the challenges is there, you know, across the state. But I can get more information on that. Regarding the, what we don't know around data, I think, again, we're, we're mindful that these are projections and this is what we have today. I will acknowledge we're still transitioning from a space of a 18 months or whatever it's been of a pandemic into maybe a new space and a new era and new opportunities for families where they're partaking in summer experiences, which might influence their decisions again in the fall, as well as we've expanded some of our, our discussions around our lottery and how would we look at our lottery and monitor that carefully, as mentioned tonight. You know, we did our first lottery draw and did we get enough information out to families with that? So I think that, again, more messaging around the lottery and what the outcomes are of lottery requests, I think could change some of those numbers going forward. And, and just knowing that the word-of-mouth transition will also play into that. As families settle in to their new school, they'll have a reaction to it. Optimistically, hopefully, it'll be positive, but also knowing that it's, it's an individual experience. Optimistically, hopefully it'll be positive, but also knowing that it's, it's an individual experience. And so I think that will play a huge part in how we respond to those situations. So those are a few of the, just the kind of the reflections I have around it. But I'll turn it over to Senior Officer Moore and see if he has any more specifics around data or anything further to add around the free and reduced lunch kind of indication that we've seen over the last several months.
Thank you Superintendent Chair Ellison, Director Arnson. I, I really do appreciate that, you know, just elaborate, the superintendent mentioned the data. So, so these are projections based upon a new model. And, and so our, our projection model, we had a bit more leeway because as we, you know, had wider attenders, we had more of a zone approach, we were able to place students in different locations. We're now in a tenancy area, essentially that's where students attend school. So, so as we're making projections, I'm waiting to see what the data looks like in October, actually September, to see if our projections are holding true. After 21, 22, our projections will be stronger because we'll clearly know who attends a particular school. So, so we're just transitioning and I, I think I'm very blessed to, to have some additional resources through Esser to help us transition through a year that, that's unknown. So I think that's the, the big pieces. These are projections. You know, we do what we can and what, what is in our control. And as mentioned, that we talked about integration and the availability of housing. Within our controls, we have stronger schools and to address some of the inequities across our, our district relative to zip code. And so I do believe we're entering 21, 22 with a, a, a very, very concrete approaches to address those inequities. The ability for us to be successful, this is very technical, planet's beginning. Now we're moving into the adaptive phase with this climate and it is going to be imperative that our principals and our teachers at our schools embrace those new families. When we talk about our projections, we know that students are identified to attend schools. Now it's going to come down to the extent to which our principals and teachers are welcoming those new communities in relative to our climate framework. I've seen some very nice signs even of students, as a shared previous, a previous board member, where students are welcoming other students. I mean, that's climate, it's, it's that personal touch, it's the relationship approach now, it's on relationships. That's really going to allow those families to feel welcome as we move into a new community. Now that's the adaptive work we talk about. The technical work is changing the boundaries, uh, of changing the approach from more of a zone model to a community school model of having centralized magnets. But now we're going through the phase of, of our principals showing their models of leadership, our teachers showing their leadership and embracing new families and making people feel welcome. I do believe we have stronger schools moving forward. But Director Arnson, I, I do think that these are projections that the superintendent mentioned. And, uh, and so I'm waiting to see, to witness in our projections, the first year we attempted to do this, um, going to a community school model, going for the first year to witness into the whole true or not. And then I'm very confident because of our team, both at the superintendent, senior, senior level, my colleagues, our principals, that we're going to meet our outcomes as identified in the C D. And again, this is the first year and I feel very positive with the data that, that we're sharing. But I, I look forward to the next presentation, uh, to see the actuals and, and to see what we need to build upon. But the bill will be something that we need to build upon and as the superintendent mentioned. Certainly the lottery, I'm very excited. Next year, as we're in person, we did previously have plans to get on the ground and do outreach and, and do the mobile enrollment registration. So I'm very confident, we do have a plan to again, increase the number of folks that are participating in our lottery process next year. But it's a testament to the team and to those that work in Minneapolis and the families. We, we were working through a pandemic and we worked through a lot of emotional, uh, work and still working through that with, with all the events that have happened in our city regarding race and police brutality. And still we, we come forward and, and, and we're ready to go in the fall and I think we'll have a stronger Minneapolis public schools. But looking forward to seeing the numbers and presenting that call view, uh, to see the extent to which our assumptions hold. I'm kind of fired up. I'm very happy with, um, the direction we're heading and, uh, thank you all for, for your support as a board that puts out issues of equity and race at the forefront. Uh, that, that's really important to folks. So, so thank you board members for that, for your leadership.
Thank you, thank you for that. And thank you, um, directors for your questions. Director Suriel, do you make questions or comments this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I wanted to, um, go back into the mental support issue. I mean, that's something that is very dear and personal to me. I know I'm extremely grateful that our district actually, we do have therapists on site. That's something that is not the reality for other districts. And I, I want to ask, so we mentioned that, um, we have therapists on every single school, correct? And now how do we ensure also that we do have therapists that are bilingual and bicultural when it comes to life schools like Anderson, for example, and Jefferson too? So do we have enough therapists and how do we ensure that we do provide that support? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Suriel, thank you for your, your support and comments regarding the, the mental health, uh, school-based mental health supports that we have. I will ask Associate Superintendent Cox to give a little more detail on it. What we do have right now are contracts at all of our schools. And so to be clear, that, that is support that did take place this past spring and it's something that we recognize as a need and we are grateful to be able to, to make those contacts and those connections. But specifically to your question on how do we ensure that we have individuals who are culturally and represent, uh, you know, language needs of support, I'll ask Associate Superintendent Cox to kind of give, give an update on how we monitor that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So each of our agencies has to go through a RFP process. So they go through a pretty stringent review and being able to have cultural relevancy and competency that matches our schools is one of our number one priorities. Once they make it into that, that pool and we kind of, then they get to be in the pool. Each of our schools has the opportunity to interview each of the, um, the agencies to look for matches for demographics, who their therapists are, looking at cultural competency of the agency as we move forward. We also realize that being able to support Minneapolis Public Schools, it takes some infrastructure for an agency, right? And so we realize that we have a lot of expertise in our community, both with our external stakeholders and small agencies and individual mental health therapists, as well as we have a lot of expertise and cultural expertise in our district. So what we started this year was something we called the cultural consultancy. And what we did was ask people to apply who thought that they had something to bring from a cultural aspect to Minneapolis Public Schools. We accepted everybody and we offered them mini grants so that we could connect them with schools who needed expertise and consultancy in the area of cultures in, in relation to mental health supports. That has been one of the most exciting things we've done and we've really been able to not only support our schools in a really different way and having them be in an interactive process with the consultants, but also to lift up the expertise of our community members as well as our internal staff to really provide support outside of their job role. Or maybe they're not able to go through our RFP process because as I said, it does take, you know, quite a bit of interest, infrastructure to be able to do that. So we're really excited. We started that this spring. Several of them are also working with us for our Mental Health Institute this week. So we're really excited about that. And then they'll start a new contract. We'll start out with, with small mini grants and as the need continues, we'll look at, at funding those and providing additional funding. So just to shout out there, we'll continue to work with our networks to make sure we get the word out. And again, as I said, we really want to make sure that we are lifting up our community providers. We're also, again, we also know our parents are experts, right? And so how do we lift them up and making them partners in this idea of supporting not only the mental health needs of our, of our students and families, but also their wellness? So sometimes I think, I, I'm sometimes surprised when people are like, we don't have enough mental health supports. And I think, wow, we have a lot of mental health supports, right? So we need to make sure that we're framing in a way that's culturally respective so that people understand that mental health is not just about illness, but it's also about wellness and that we're really supporting that through the district on all levels, in all grade levels and then also our families. I think our agencies have done a great job as well as our, our, our staff that work for, that work in Minneapolis supporting families through the pandemic. And I think we'll continue to open that up to make sure that we're not only supporting just the students, but that whole family unit.
Thank you, um, Director Alamein.
Thank, thank you Chair Ellison and everyone, good evening. I do apologize tonight I have some issues with my camera, so I am here with just audio only. But I did, I wanted to just make several comments in regards to the adaptive piece or the plan. Glad to hear that the principals and associate superintendents will be working more closely to the families so that they're more accessible to our families within our community. But I'm also a little concerned about the numbers and I know we don't have everything yet and it won't be available until the start of next school year. With our schools trying to keep those numbers over the 200 within our inner city schools, I'm just hoping that we will continue to work diligently to make sure that we can do everything possible to make sure that those numbers stay above that, to prevent any type of closure, anything that may have to come to the table. But also to make sure that these adaptive pieces, um, is not just a temporary situation that we make that the model in the expectation as we move on throughout our school years so that we are better to tell our stories and have more success stories to share within our community. So just those two concerns, I guess I wanted to just share and maybe one of you can give me some insight on that, please. Thank you.
Director Alamein, thank you for your, your comments and acknowledging what I heard to be two pieces. One was just the close connection to our, our families from our building administrators and associate superintendents. And again, the role of the associate superintendent is to provide that, that support for the respective school they oversee and more specifically the, the building principal. But certainly that has been the communication and the, the practice over the last several weeks of those transitions that are happening for, for families, you know, to make sure that we are as best as possible handing off those, those transitions so parents can start to feel the new environment and what that will be like for their child as they, they take on a new, new pathway of learning in that school or school community. And then regarding the, the numbers of schools that we have that are under 250, that was again, a, a very, very hotly debated conversation about how do we address the, the low enrollment that we have throughout the district? And certainly we felt a multifaceted approach was the best way to do that. Looking at not only the, the programming and what we're offering, but the policies and practices that we have around our enrollment as well as the boundary changes and the climate framework. So a myriad of approaches to address a myriad of, of needs. But I think from a, from an efficiency and from a financial practicality, you know, the school's enrollment has to be built up in order for it to be sustained. And so we made a conscious decision to, to move with a comprehensive design so that we could divide our conditions for success in all of our schools. And our commitment has been, we need, you know, for the next three years to create the, the greatest opportunity for success. And as mentioned by I think a couple of other directors' conversations, you know, we, we have an amount of what we can control and we're, we're going to continue to, to do that. We also recognize that not everyone may be aligned to some of our values. So it's incumbent upon us as we move forward each year with implementation to reevaluate where we are successful within our control and to, to recall about messaging that, um, those positive strengths and those things that are happening. So appreciate you lifting that up and recognize that, um, you know, we, we have made a reduction of the number of schools on that list of less than 250. But we have a few more that we want to work on and I think that again, it's, it's something that's going to happen to the best of our abilities over the next couple of years. So I appreciate, um, the conversation around that.
Thank, thank you Superintendent, thank you.
Oh, there could be, I, there's a couple of things that I haven't come up. I am like, I'm on our projections. And I'm like, I just wonder if the, if the system type numbers. In September, our total of these schools started, and so it is unquestionable, and what it processes, absolutely. I want to thank you and the other students, the other students, us, that we, 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 we process. I, I got, um, three months, one month. As a parent, that, that's one of the things that I struggle with. I must say this, because a parent, that's very difficult, that's basically two different schools. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of, and that is a, that's, that's, that's.
Chair, Chair Ellison, I apologize for interrupting, but I'm having a hard time hearing you with the audio. I know you have information that is really important for us to hear. So if I could ask, could you, if you try and hear what you're saying?
I have something covering the speaker.
That's much better, thank you.
Okay, good. So I was thanking folks on the appeals process and just talking about personally the struggles that I've gone through. With some of the emails we've received, as a parent with four children, sometimes in three different schools, I was saying it's hard, it's a hard thing to do and this was a choice that me and my family had made, but it's still difficult. And I know some of the, um, some of the emails that I'm getting are from parents with ninth graders who are being placed in schools different than their older siblings, um, in high school. And that was one thing I never, ever had to deal with, having another one child at a high school age in two different schools. And so as we go forward, I don't know what kind of changes we can make for this year, but if we talk about lessons learned, um, I'm hoping that's something that we're looking at, how we're dealing with siblings specifically, um, who either because of family circumstances have to move or because of the different lines that we draw, the new lines we've made, um, their younger siblings from any of those schools is not the same as their older siblings. So just a couple of comments. So if you want to be willing to tackle, there's more comments than questions, but, um, but thank you for this work.
Chair Ellison, thank you, thank you for your comments. Again, I think for what I heard there is the, the ongoing change of any time you take on a, um, a boundary change, uh, like this. And you think that to the point that was made earlier, we'll be through a director's comment about the number of schools we have, um, in the population enrollment. And again, we're trying to, we're trying to create conditions for success across the district. And we have over 60 schools and, um, see significant disparities of what programs are being offered throughout our schools and recognize that the, the way to build up those programs is to be able to have resources in those schools. It does take a shift of, um, population. And we, we made a conscious decision to do this, um, at once. This is over a period of time because we felt it was too critical for us to, to make this shift, you know, with the values that the board had shared and what we were hard to be important in terms of, um, And so our commitment does remain to ensuring that we're on our track and putting supports in place where we can. This year is a crucial year and asking families to give us the time to build the supports. Other students, as they try to anticipate these spaces, build the supports around them. You know, the experiences that they may have had with one child, and they'll certainly be different with this child as they're coming into this space. And so I just again, recognize that that's a difficult transition. And through every boundary change that I've been through, you know, these things continue to come up. And just know that we'll continue to monitor our process moving forward in the future. But appreciate all the care and commitment that people have provided at this point with our process for making these transitions.
Thank you, Superintendent. And you know, Kate, I was from those board members with all of you. I am completely behind this confidence of just this design. I believe in it and want to see it. I believe it's going to be successful, it's going to work for our students, it's going to do great things. So thank you, Superintendent. Seeing no more raised hands, if we can close out the discussion of this evening, is there anything else you would like to say, Superintendent, in closing?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge that this is our final school board meeting for the twenty twenty one school year. And I won't go into a great length of detail around what this means in terms of reflection, but I would just offer to the board, our staff, the public in general, that we've been through a lot this past year and obviously an understatement. But throughout that timeframe, we've had a lot of opportunities for us to, to celebrate some successes that we've had as well. And so I'd just like to encourage others to, as you reflect back on the year as we close out this school year, take some time to bond to the work that you've done, either in the classroom, in your department, in your position as a director. Acknowledge that this has not been easy and it has not been something that we could have anticipated. But more than just surviving, I think we have accepted the challenge and we have, as mentioned already here, have kind of doubled down our energy and our commitment to what we're doing. And so I just want to say thank you to the board for all the work that you've done and the support that you've provided for the district and our students, families and staff. Thank you, Chair Ellison.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Senior Officer Moore, Associate Superintendent Pax and your teams. And thank the Directors for tonight, this conversation, this discussion. I'm now going to adjourn tonight's meeting, our last meeting of the school year, like Superintendent said. We will meet again in August. Please get outside, get some fresh air, take a breath, get some rest. So thank you. Good night.